All right, guys, we're going to call this meeting to order if anybody would please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody have a seat.
Before we start, Ronnie, I need to announce that this meeting is being recorded.
Okay, all right, at this time we'll do roll call, please, Ms. Connie.
Mayor Frazier.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Absent.
Councilman Bishop.
Here.
Councilwoman Fleming.
Here.
Councilman Coon.
Here.
Town Clerk, that's me, I'm here. Um, Town Attorney, Mr. Cobreline Senior. Dale Williams Consultant and Carl Pynch.
Here.
All right, item number one will be additions, deletions, changes and approval of agenda. So we just need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
On second.
Second.
Good, all in favor of approving agenda say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, all right. Item two will be approval of minutes of March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one town council meeting. Just also need a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the minutes, March twenty-second.
On second.
Second.
Good, all in favor of approving the minutes for March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, say aye.
Aye.
Good, all opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, so. Item number three, public, guys, at this time we will open it up for public participation. If anybody has anything to say, please step to the podium, uh, say your name loud and clear. Ms. Connie will actually step out of your way, so at this time it is open for public participation. You will have three minutes, okay, so keep it three minutes. The board will not discuss anything with you, this is your time to speak, okay? So, we have it, go ahead, yes ma'am.
Hi, my name is Kathy Moser and I just, um, when I got the letter in the mail, my veranda is up here, about thirty-five dollars, um, added to our bill and because we have a well, we don't have a meter and the nineteen sixty-five that I saw on the website, we felt that, oh my gosh. And so anyway, I came in today with my neighbor and I met Connie. She is absolutely wonderful. She is, she explained everything to me, she un, she explained that if we do not follow the rules and the laws, that we cannot get funding from federal government or grants. And so she was just terrific.
Awesome.
And I just want to let you know that she took the time, she explained things, she made us understand and just, she was just awesome. And the, I went on the website, saw the minutes, it was a pleasure to read the minutes.
Yes ma'am.
And the order we were supposed to be.
Awesome.
And it was, it was a pleasure.
Awesome.
Sorry.
Awesome.
But anyway, I just wanted to give her a compliment because it was a pleasure to come in here today.
Thank you.
But my veranda came from, it's back down here, so I.
Well, good, you're good.
Yeah, and, uh, she was able to calm us both down because we were, you know, we both had the issue.
Good deal.
Nobody ever calls me.
They want you now, so.
Sorry about that, so, but anyway, and I thought I needed to come here and give her kudos for so professionalism and everything like that. So, and more people need to talk to her because she is very knowledgeable and she can explain things better than, to make you understand them. And so, so I'm okay with the thirty-five dollars.
Okay. We, we appreciate you coming in and thanking because we don't hear a lot of thanks a lot of times. We don't hear a lot of praise a lot of times, so we hear a lot of fussing, so yes ma'am.
Exactly, so but both, um, my neighbor and I, we just, we both left here feeling good about the thirty-five dollars and, you know, hey, it's, you know, we don't want to be stagnant here.
Yes ma'am.
We want to keep going and growing.
Yes, yes ma'am.
And to get grants, that's what we have to do.
Right.
And follow the rules and follow the laws.
Yes ma'am.
And everybody should be there across the board.
Yes ma'am, that's definitely.
I'm one hundred percent with you.
Thank you so much.
Last year I was.
Well, thank you.
And I promise I didn't pay her sales. So, anyway, so we have a jump here and I hope she stays.
We do too. Yes ma'am.
Yes, so anyway, so that, that was my saying.
Thank you.
Y'all can go ahead and construct business, whatever you want to do.
Thank you ma'am, thank you ma'am. Have a good night, yes ma'am.
Okay, and I'll see you.
Yes, yes ma'am. All right, anybody else, yes sir.
Hey, my name is Ken Snyder, I'm a teacher here at Fort White, so I love this community, been here for twenty years. Uh, brought the subway here, uh, many years ago, so just, uh, let me know my history of Fort White. So I, I love Fort White, this, this, this man comes to me, he's not here, he's, uh, at a wedding of the grandson, Gene Martin, and he, almost the local home park west of, uh, Fort White. And he's given the opportunity, uh, to do some acquire and do some upgrades on it. So, uh, originally he spent a lot of money zoning that property for home and local home and then it's come through the, uh, you know, done some acquires and under a certain definition of single family dwellings, you were unable to put local homes in it. Well, there's a lot of local homes and that, that specifically at one time had six. There's two dormant, septic tanks and city hookups that are dormant. My, you know, I was hoping to acquire the land and then again, uh, have some affordable housing for people around here and then do some upgrades to the park. So I've rubbed that snag and I just really wanted just to bring up that for a possible discussion with the board. The guy that can tell you more about the property will be Gene himself, he's out of town, he will be able to level with the next meeting, but, uh, that's all I have to say.
Got you, you did, yeah, we have that on the, it's the very last item, Mr. Schneider, uh, tonight, just to discuss real quick. There's no action or anything to be taken on it tonight, but I wanted to bring it up, so I asked Ms. Connie to actually put it on the agenda. So it will be the very last topic tonight, just to kind of bring it up and discuss real quick, so yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes sir, appreciate you, yes sir.
Mr. Mayor, if you want to see if any of those in college, if you press.
But nobody's raising hands, are they?
No.
Okay, I don't know if they did. Got you, Clark, Ms. Connie.
I got you.
You own a clock, let's go.
Hi, I'm also here to say that Mr. Connie should get a raise entirely unpaid and I think you guys should consider that for the next tax increase. I do have a couple of questions. Uh, some time ago, the city of Lake City was here, interested in the lighting utilities in the town of Fort White, and I'm just wondering why there was so much hostility towards Fort White for Mr. Bishop? He's the one I really remember, but the, the rest of the board didn't seem to be happy. That Lake City was here, they are a professional utility outfit in Columbia County. Everything that Columbia County has done in utilities has lost money. So it's hard for me to understand why this town wants to hang its hat on Columbia County when the county is not a professional outfit when it comes to utilities. It clearly doesn't have the depth of manpower or the knowledge or the understanding. I have that sign-in sheet there tonight, I don't know what that's for, is that for the report that you're going to present?
Yeah, that's for, that's for the, uh, that's for the report that we're drafting up.
Right, I noticed the one report there, the whole appendix is missing?
It's a draft report.
So there's no appendix?
It's a draft report, draft feasibility study, Ms. Margaret. It, it, I can come up here and present a draft report to this commission anytime they desire me to. What we're doing at the behest of the commission and the D E P is prepare a feasibility study, a feasibility study, okay? Not design study, a feasibility study for wastewater treatment plant. This is the draft, we don't want to put a bunch of, we don't want to put you, put a bunch of appendices with a draft report to where you've got four, five, six versions of those appendices running around at the end of the day once we finalize the report.
I understand that the report is on the agenda and I understand that that report is there. The report, uh, references various parts in the appendices. So neither any of the, none of the board members or any member from the public can reference any of the things that North Florida Professional Services is asking you.
Did you read the sign-in sheet, Mr. Line? Did you read, did you read the sign-in sheet?
Sir. We need, I think we need to be dressing the board.
I'm trying.
Well, we was asking them questions, so.
No, just asking, because on the sign-in sheet, there is a, there is a place, there is a place to check where you can get an attorney.
Let him finish, sir, just, yeah, you don't, you don't have to.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor. So I was just wondering where all the parts of the appendix are. Every other report I've seen that's listed appendix, whether it's from the state or law of the government, always has those items with it. So I, I don't know quite frankly what he's talking about. So I'm, I'm, I don't understand why none of that stuff is there and though that stuff is there on the sign-in sheet.
All right, anybody else? All right, all right, this time we'll close public participation, we'll open up item, item number four, which is new business. Um, this is actually going to, is Mr. Cobreline, you're going to present this? I know you're stepping in, you want to present this, Ms. Connie or who?
No, um, Jacob's going to present.
Oh, this is second reading of the ordinance?
No, no, not required, Jacob.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm skipping right up to Jacob's Lord, I'm mercy.
Feasibility study.
I got, yes, I'm sorry, my bad, I'm skipping right up.
Get you some new glasses.
I know these glasses ain't working, I'm like, what the world? Sorry, Ms. Spratt, I was about to jump out of the.
So, a while back, the town, uh, first, I'm Jacob Spratt with North Florida Professional Services. Um, a while back, the town had, uh, worked with us, went to Tallahassee and we had talked with D E P and, uh, D E P had basically advised us that going forward to get any kind of grant funding and stuff like that, that we would need to do a feasibility study to do a wastewater system. What I sent to Connie for, to give y'all was a draft, again, talking about the other, this was incomplete. This was kind of just to go ahead and get some input from the council members and the town.
Right.
Basically, the feasibility report right now is not set in stone. This is it, we're here to get input, so we don't have to go forward in finishing this document. Basically, we have three alternatives that we were looking at. Actually, two alternatives for collection system and three alternatives for the treatment system. For the collection systems, we have the gravity and the low pressure system. And then for the, uh, treatment plant, we have the alternative with Fort White constructing the new plant and then with Columbia County constructing the new plant. And then the other alternative is to, as I said, keep the status quo and wait. And all those will be located in chapter five.
Which those, those didn't change from the, the original one you put out, right?
Um, they have.
They have, okay, so chapter five, okay.
Remember we met with D E P before, they advised that, you know, that we take it to be a regional system versus just a system for Fort White, uh, just for funding purposes. As y'all know, the river says a lot of lots on the river and that's very dear to the D E P to
try to get some of that off the spring, or the river and springs.
Um, one thing I notice about this, guys, is we've got like gravity fed system versus a, a truly pump system, one versus the other. Uh, if we do like, say a pump system, every residence would have a, a sump pump, correct me if I'm wrong, Jacob. Uh, every residence would be required to have one and we would be responsible for taking care of those. The way City of High Springs does the same concept, I mean, y'all, y'all all know what business I'm in and, and I'm just saying, I, I think a gravity fed system would, it, it, it's going to cost more for some reason and, and, I mean, I haven't looked at every single.
Gravity fed?
Yes, yeah, I believe the gravity fed's about ten million more.
Yes.
Okay.
But, but like, like you're saying, the operation and maintenance on them.
Will pull on the pumps because the City of High Springs basically, so if, say my sump pump goes out at my house and I'm connected to that sewer system, I cannot fix it even though I'm a septic tank contractor, I have to pay the city to come, they take it back to their shop, now, they, they do rebuild them, they don't just throw a brand new pump in there. They do rebuild them, but it's a cost that, that, I mean, is going to carry on.
It's going to be like a water, it's going to be like a water.
If you look at the process for the E one low pressure system, uh, has the, the cost for each pump. So basically anytime a pump would go out at a residential business, uh, you would have to install any one of those.
Where are you seeing that at, Jacob?
Uh, it would be table two.
Table two.
It'd be, uh, E one simplex grinder pump and duplex grinder pump, so simplex would be for the, uh, houses and then the duplex would be for.
You're sitting on table two?
So, so that one grinder pump, it's six thousand?
Oh, fifteen, I got you, okay, E one.
So one of those grinder pumps is six thousand dollars.
Ooh, Lord. Well, and at first you probably wouldn't have a lot of problems on it.
No.
Then, then as, as it ages, you're going to start having a lot of them, so, yeah.
But one thing.
But that would cost, yes.
I, I'm just, that, that was one of my, you know, concerns in the whole thing was, you know, look at, look at both sides of that because you're going to have ongoing costs.
Why is the gravity fed so much more? What, I mean, is there an answer to that? It seems like it would be less because you've got less mechanism, pipe files possibly.
Bob White, North Florida Professional Services, the, the gravity, Ronnie, the gravity's so much more now, it, it, right now, just because of the cost of PVC is, is.
It's a lot.
It's going to improve, I mean, it's a lot like you go out there and when you look at plywood and stuff like that, I mean, it's just, you know, building materials, same thing's true with that PVC piping, I mean, it's, it's.
Lumbering.
Yeah.
A lot, I mean, it's ten million dollars, geez.
Yeah, I also wanted to mention that, uh, we had also put in for Springs grant funding, asked for this and that's why we made with the D E P to talk about getting actually selected, so.
How are we setting to that, I mean, are we, are we?
We have to complete the feasibility, they told us to complete the feasibility studies.
Right, um, again, Bob White, North Florida Professional Services, we, and you were there with Trina, with Trina, about our, who is the head person, uh, one of the head people in, in S R F. We, the first time it went through, we can get, um, we talked to them again, we're going to resubmit it this next time again. Um, we've been, and the feasibility study, which really comes out of Tim Banks Group, which is Clean Water Fund, they recommended doing the feasibility study, they said not only would that open the town up to be able to get the, um, the funding from S R F.
Yes ma'am.
Which at this point, at, at this point, it's eighty percent, it's eighty percent, I mean, when, when you looked at it four years ago, it was about ninety, ten, ninety percent loan, ten percent grant, now it's about eighty percent principal forgiveness or grant and twenty percent loan. So I'd, uh, they said we'd be better off doing this and the next time we go on for the Springs grant, which basically is grant monies, and, and, and to do this, that's one of the reasons.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
I was saying also, uh, I say we're here to kind of get this input from the council as well as the public, uh, that was kind of hard, but I got some, uh, sheets back there, we kind of showed you kind of the different phases and stuff like that, we don't have a copy.
Yeah, I think it's small, yeah. Do you have any questions, Bill, or, or Connie?
Can I get one of those tables so I can see that? I, I did have, I did, I know I sent it in here, but it was pretty small and blurry in that packet.
I'll sleep with this one, this is about overall service area map.
Got you.
As you see there, we got, uh, Fort White, we've separated out of phases.
Right, so I mean, this would be.
State park.
Right, later on.
Yeah.
And the state park would be hooked to that also?
Yeah, that's, that's the point, there's the three rivers and there's.
To get rid of all that, they've got all kind of, um, what do they call them, uh? They've got an I N R B out there that's kind of failing creating a retention farm, one of the new alternative systems for septic tanks.
Okay.
To get, to get rid of all those things down there.
Yeah, so say that's what, uh, D E P kind of advised, that anything that we could get near the river, I'd be beneficial.
That's your phase one, phase two, phase three.
And then three rivers is four, five.
Yeah.
And then at the three rivers could be separated out, uh, that's what I'm talking about. Right now we have it all together.
Right.
Um, but as big as three rivers is, it would more likely need to be separated out in phases.
Yeah.
Like I said, it's counting some, some input from everybody, kind of figure out which, which direction we would, uh, everybody would like to.
When you say direction, what are you, what are you asking, Jacob, what, what, what?
The different alternatives, uh, that we have laid out.
Yeah.
Figure out Fort White, you constructed and, uh, with that you need to enter into.
Yeah, if there, and if there were any, I mean, again, like we explained earlier, this is, this is, uh, an immediate draft, but there's going to be, there'd be more drafts, we're, you know, we will have everything, as I was going, all the, uh, appendices and everything, then there'll be a final topic. But, uh, what we're, what we're looking to start out here is just to make sure that as far as the town's going and the town council, representatives of the town, that we're going in the right direction.
Right.
That we're, that we're putting this thing together with the right direction, with the understanding that it, it, it's going to be phased, first three phases that we show now is, is the town of Fort White. Um, the, uh, again, like Jacob said, but we show a fourth phase for three rivers, but that probably will be phased as well, depending on where the money's coming from.
Right.
And, and the same, the same thing's true there. So, I mean, we're just, again, when he says direction, we're not looking for approval of it at this point, we're, we're just looking to make sure, well, yeah, or could you guys look at this? Or could you look at it this way, or could you look at, you know, sir?
Right.
What the, what the town wants to do.
Got you. Any suggestions, guys?
I mean, I'm, I mean, I'm, you know, we've, we've. They pretty much got us, you know, two, two items to do from all sewer systems, you know, I mean, and it's pretty cut, ground loads, do you want every, every home to have a sump pump or?
I can't get.
I, I would rather go, I would rather go probably, if, if, if it all works out, I think we would rather push forward for the gravity fed down the road. And in there again, is, is, are we going to be, are we going, are we going to want to accept this responsibility of, of a sewer system?
Right.
Or are we going to talk to Columbia County about that, taking that with the water?
With the waters, I mean.
I think y'all put that in here as.
That's already in the.
Yeah, we have, uh, there, the different alternatives for the wastewater treatment systems. Uh, we have one with Fort White constructing it and another one with the county.
Right.
Uh, right now, we were, we put the feasibility study that Fort White was to construct it because Fort White would be eligible for more.
Right.
Grant money. Uh, you could always, because you have to enter in, enter a local agreement with Columbia County to service three rivers or, you know, because that is their area, so how, how you work it out with the, the county.
That'd be down the road.
It'd be down the road, yes.
Y'all, 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 y'all in favor, y'all in favor of going forward?
I mean, you know, unless you're just way down at the bottom of the hill and, and, you know, they're just not able, there are going to be some places that will probably have to be.
Have to have.
A lift station will have to be used some places. Not saying it's going to exclude, but in the City of High Springs, every single, and it don't matter if your house is fifteen feet above sewer pipe tap.
Every one of them got a pump.
Every one of them's got a pump and it's done, in my opinion.
They're expensive, you know what, now that you said that, I put one in, I, I just put a house over there.
I mean, I'm just going off of what I know from our, from our neighbors.
A grinder station, well, they make you put in.
Yeah, and like I said, they do rebuild them and.
I think it was like sixteen thousand dollars I paid for that.
Sounds about right.
Yeah, I remember, I remember paying.
I mean, I'm, I'm more, I mean, I know gravity, gravity's going to cost us more, you know, upfront, but in the long run, um, maintenance is going to be a lot less maintenance, you might as well take your own two, got, having two less employees in the sewer department.
Well, I guess y'all was looking for direct, are y'all all in agreeance, so it's pushing forward, trying for the grant for the sewer system and stuff?
Yeah, yeah, for that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, most definitely. And we could, we, we could talk to Columbia County about that, you know, down the road, go enter into an interlocal or whatever, we decided to go, go with that, so. Much as that, much as that.
Thank you, sir.
Jacob, thank you for your time, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right, guys, um, that would be Mr. Jacob's number one, so let's go to number two, which is, it says Mr. Cobreline, Mr. Cobreline, you want to read that, sir, and I can, I'll open it, I'll open it up for a public hearing. That's article three, three. Well, I can read it if you want me to, how you want me to do it, Mr. Snyder. I don't mind reading. I got it right here, three, is that the right one?
Still got mine pretty much on order.
Yeah, right here, sure, I got it right here, ordinance number twenty twenty dash twelve?
Yep.
Yeah. You want me to go ahead and read it? Okay, all right, I'll go ahead and open it, I'll open it and do the reading. An ordinance of the town of Fort White, Florida, amending section three, uh, oh nine twenty-five, article three of the land development code of the town of Fort White, Florida, to provide for regulations concerning communications facilities in the public right of ways, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for codification and providing an effective date. And that would be on ordinance number twenty twenty dash twelve, so I'll go ahead at this time and open it up for a public hearing. If anybody has anything. All right, we will close that public hearing. And what we have here. All right, we got, that was the, that, was that the second reading? That was the second reading, so we need to go ahead and make a, make a motion to go ahead and approve and then I guess we could do a roll call, I guess we're going to do a roll call on this, Connie.
Okay. Councilman Cook is out, you're going to make the motion?
We don't have the motion yet.
We don't have to, oh, you need to make a motion and then do the roll call, okay, I'm sorry. So guys, we need a motion for, uh, approving the second reading ordinance twenty twenty dash twelve, I'm sorry.
I make a motion that we accept, um, second reading of the ordinance twenty twenty dash two twelve.
I'll second it.
You got a second, okay, now we'll do a roll call now.
Any further discussion?
Oh, any further discussion? All right, so now I'll do the roll call.
Okay. Councilwoman Fleming?
Here.
No, hear your name?
Yes.
Councilman Coon?
Yes.
Mayor Frazier?
Yes.
And Councilman Bishop?
Yes.
All right, we'll move to the next, we got a couple to get there, guys, so y'all bear with me. All right, first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one two sixteen, let me get to it, y'all bear with me. Two sixteen, right there. All right, in, uh, an ordinance of the town of Fort White, Florida, pursuant to chapter one sixty-three, part two, Florida statutes and section one six-six dot oh four-one. Florida statutes, amending ordinance number two thousand thirteen dash one seventy-four, land development code, section two point oh two oh three, entitled standards for buildings and building placements, establishing, establishing subsection F entitled minimal dwelling unit size, providing for severability, providing for, uh, repellor and providing for an effective date. And that was ordinance twenty twenty-one two thousand sixteen. Now, we don't need to make a mo, that's the first reading on that one, correct, so no motion on that one, so.
No, no, no public hearing on that one.
No, but, right, no public hearing on that one, right, right.
You have to, um, motion to move it to the second reading.
Which is need direction, y'all think you, you're going to need a motion, it's direction, right? It's direction, so.
Motion.
Oh, you do need a motion, okay, I'm sorry, my bad, okay, got you. All right, so we need a motion, if y'all approve of it, to move to second reading.
I make a motion to move to the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash two one six.
I'll make a motion to move to the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash two one six. Two one nine, or two one six, I'm sorry, two one six, I'm looking at two one nine. I'm all off cue, I don't need glasses messing with me. All right, you got a second?
Sure.
Good. All in favor of moving first reading of ordinance two, twenty twenty-one two sixteen to the second? Say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? All right, so, good on that one. B. All right, C, public meeting, first reading of twenty twenty-one two thousand nineteen, amending the land development code of the town of Fort White, so. All right, ordinance number twenty twenty-one two nineteen, an ordinance of the town of Fort White, Florida pursuant to chapter one sixty-three, part two, Florida statutes and section one sixty-six point oh forty-one. Florida statutes amending ordinance number two, uh, two thousand thirteen dash one seventy-four, land development code, section two oh one oh two, entitled zoning districts, and section three oh six, entitled commercial general, providing for severability, providing for repellor, and providing for effective date. And that would be the first reading on that one also, guys, so we need a.
Make a motion to move to the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash two nineteen.
Got a second?
I'll second it.
All right, any further discussion? All right, so, all in, all in favor of moving to the second reading ordinance twenty twenty-one dash two nineteen? Say aye?
Aye.
I'm sorry, who made the first and the second?
Me.
Miss Con, Miss Fleming made the motion.
I'm in the second.
Mr. Bishop made the second. All right, all in favor, say aye? All opposed, say nay? All right. All right, number D, public meeting, first reading ordinance twenty twenty-one dash two eighteen. An ordinance of the town of Fort White, Florida pursuant to chapter one sixty-three, part two, Florida statutes and section one sixty-six dash oh four-one. Florida statutes amending ordinance number two thousand thirteen dash one seventy-four, land development code, section eight oh two oh three D, entitled vesting. Standards for presumptive vesting for density only, providing for severability, providing for repellor, and providing an, uh, an effective date. All right. I need a motion, that is the first reading on that one also.
Do we have a discussion?
Yeah, any discussion on that, I'm sorry. You do?
Yeah, the third warehouse. You know, we find that one to meet.
Where you standing at?
There is a need to clarify the ancient plats and unrecorded subdivisions are not the publicly vested properties.
There's a need to clarify. Or unrecorded subdivisions are not presumptive.
You might get me what that means, I didn't know.
Things are confusing.
Means what?
I did not draft that warehouse, but it sounds like there might be some recorded plans that need to be reclarified, but I will have an answer for you prior to the second reading.
There is a need to clarify that ancient plats.
Remember when we had the meeting and Mr. Garrett explained about the plats that are older, much older plats, and there has not been any development on them, et cetera? It was to, um, deal with that so that we could go ahead and those plats get, uh, to avoid going through the vacating process is what I'm trying to say, so that they could, um, be developed.
I think that's the night I missed.
It was.
Think it was, yeah, you weren't here that night. See, that's what you did.
Make sure I understand that before I go on, but that's one piece I don't understand.
So, we're okay, you'll, you'll get into information for that, okay? So, we can get that before the second read, Mr. Fleming. All right, so, any more discussion? All right, do we have a, uh, we need a motion to approve, uh.
The first reading?
Yeah, approve the first reading, or move to the second reading.
Make a motion to move to the second reading of ordinance number twenty-one, twenty twenty-one dash two eighteen.
Two eighteen, yes, two eighteen. Second? Second, good. Any more discussion? All right, all in favor of moving to the second reading ordinance twenty twenty-one dash two eighteen? Say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? All right. Uh, E, public meeting, first reading ordinance twenty twenty-one dash two seventeen. An ordinance of the town of Fort White, Florida pursuant to chapter one sixty-three, part two, Florida statutes and section one sixty-six dash, dot, period oh four-one, Florida statutes, establishing a fee schedule for applica, applications and amendments to the town of Fort White comprehensive plan and land development number one eighty-six, or, excuse me, land development code revoking, nullifying, and invalidating ordinance number one eighty-six dash two oh, two sixteen, entitled, applications for development, development activities under the town of Fort White, Florida, or Fort White land development code, including but not limited to development orders, conditional use and special use exceptions and permits subdivision, or sub, subdivision applications, providing G for enforcement, providing for severability, providing for repellor, and providing, providing for an effective date. Good, Lord has a mouthful. Okay. No. All right, so, do we have, do we have any questions on that before we make a motion?
Does it go to the second reading?
Yes. So, we just need a motion to move to the second.
I'll make a motion to move to the second. Reading twenty twenty-one dash two seventeen.
Second? Got a second? Good. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving ordinance number twenty twenty-one two seventeen to move to the second reading? Say aye?
Aye.
Good, all opposed, say nay? All right, one more. Public meeting, first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash two fifteen, establishing the town council as a local planning agency instead of the planning and zoning board, which we discussed, that was you here last, did you, did you miss?
I missed it.
You missed that one too, okay.
But I, I know what's going on.
All right, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash two fifteen, an ordinance of the town of Fort White, Florida designating the town council as a local planning agency, designating the responsibility of implementing the town's land development regulations to the town council, vacating the establishment of the planning and zoning board, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for effective date. So, I just need a motion to. Is that the second, as if, we need to move to the second reading on that one. I'll make a motion to move to the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash two one five. Good, second?
Second.
Good. Any discussion? Any further discussion? All right, so, all in favor of moving ordinance twenty twenty-one two fifteen to the second reading? Say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? All right. All right, number three, Ms. Connie Brinkin.
Um, I'd like to just point out a couple of things that you may not have noticed in the, um, ordinance number two oh two one two fifteen. Mayor Frazier and I have discussed this. According to the, um, Communities Planning Act of Florida, you must have a member of the school board to be on the planning, uh, committee or the planning board. So, so that's why that's in there. Normally, they come when things are being considered that involve the school system, and they are a non-voting member. I just wanted to clarify that for you.
Um, first on my list is, I'm requesting permission to hire a temporary employee to fill in for Vern Zerling, who is out on medical leave. Vern has chosen not to be paid for sick or vacation time accrued, therefore it will have no, will not have a negative budget impact because Vern is not being paid.
And he's going, he is going through.
At his decision.
He is going for surgery, right?
Yes. He's going in on Wednesday.
Is he, okay, on his back, is it on his back? So, we don't really know how long he'll be out.
And HIPAA doesn't, well, you're not supposed to.
Gotcha. All right, well, yeah, I mean, do you have any problem?
Um, I'm going to try to hire somebody without going through labor finders if at all possible, but that may not be possible, so it may cost us a little bit more than just hiring someone. But if anybody knows anyone that would like a job, um, for the time being, it is temporary, but it could conceivably work into be full-time, I mean, permanent, if Vern, for whatever reason, cannot come back.
So, yeah, I mean, y'all have a problem, I mean, I.
He needs a lot, yeah.
Yeah, we do. Well, and because too, um, Jeremiah is being kept busy now performing all of the flushing, all of the backwashing, et cetera, et cetera, so it leaves Buster to do all the mowing, the litter pickup, everything.
That's hard for one guy.
He definitely needs some money.
Yeah, it's not possible for one person to do it all.
That's hard for one person to do, so, yeah, most definitely. Most definitely.
All right. Next item is to request approval of resolution number R two oh two one two nineteen, which is establishing the fee for occupational, um, actually, it should read business tax license. Attorney, uh.
It's got a three words name.
Pardon me?
Doesn't it have a three-word name? Business?
Business tax receipt.
Something like.
Yes, Attorney Cobreline informed me, um, after this had already been published, that the, it was changed, the law changed the wording to business tax receipt. It's the same as what we, you know, use for occupation license. But anyway, it's gonna, we had discussed this before and approved it, that it would be seventy-five dollars, um, increase from twenty-five to seventy-five, when we did all the other fees that we talked about.
How much, what were we, what was it again, we was going to, you said from, how much, what? So, the late fee?
Pardon me?
What'd you say, the occup, the? Say what you just said, Miss Fleming?
We have discussed increasing the fee for businesses to obtain their business tax receipt from twenty-five to seventy-five, when we did all of the other fees for the, um, water, et cetera, et cetera. So, this is just the resolution to, um, put that into effect.
That's right. So, we need a motion to, yes, we need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution R twenty twenty-one dash two nineteen.
What's the second one say? Any more discussion? All right, all in favor of approving, uh, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash two nineteen? Say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Next item is request approval of resolution number R two oh two one dash two eighteen, approving the execution of a lighting and maintenance agreement with F D O T for reimbursement on the maintenance of the street lighting here in, in the town.
Did we ever, did we ever get them to raise that, the agreement, was, was that true?
This is the streetlights only, it's not the traffic lights or the school zone flashers. This is strictly street.
Light, just the sidewalk lights, basically?
Yes.
Right.
They have a set formula that they, um, pay.
That's what I'm saying, but didn't, I thought we were, but that, that set formula was dated back from like thirty years ago, wasn't it?
No, they increase it.
Well, okay, so there were.
They increase it based on, um, the consumer price indexes.
Is that, is that, from what I'm seeing, is that eighty-six thousand? Is that the number I'm seeing?
Um, last year, it was ten thousand one hundred eighty-three dollars.
Well, I'll get that number from, man.
Nine thousand nine hundred sixty-two.
Well, I'm sure the total payment amount for the fiscal year, I'm looking at payment amount.
There's a sheet in the back showing for two thousand nineteen that the sum of ten thousand one hundred eighty-three dollars.
And what was last year, ten thousand, something you said?
That was for July two thousand eighteen through June two thousand nineteen. This agreement is for.
That's just a, that, that number is just an example.
This agreement is for July two, two oh two one through June of two oh two eight.
All right, yeah, okay.
If you will look on, um, item number two, in the agreement itself, it says F D O T shall pay to the maintaining, maintaining agency a sum of eleven thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars and seventeen cents for the fiscal year in which this agreement is signed. So, this year, we'll get eleven thousand nine hundred.
But it had a run through two thousand twenty-eight.
Each year, it gets renewed.
Right.
You renew it through resolution. That's why they have twenty twenty-eight on here. Each year, you go, have to go in and, and renew it.
Okay. Okay. All right, so we just need a motion, we just need a motion to approve, uh.
Make a motion to approve resolution number R twenty twenty-one dash two eighteen.
I'll see it.
Second, any more discussion? All right, all in favor of approving resolution twenty twenty-one dash two eighteen? Say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? All right.
We have a total of forty-eight street lights that we pay. What this is designed to do is to reimburse us for the electricity that we pay for them to be lit.
Yeah, you're right, Mr. Dave, Mr. Bishop, that's, that's gotta be an example, because they said three hundred and thirty lights.
Right, that, that's.
Yeah, but it does, it's a example, right, there, guys. I'm going, good, we're getting eighty-nine thousand dollars for lights.
Where's all that money going?
I ain't.
They don't, I, they don't start running together sometimes.
Don't it though?
That was crazy. You just have to put it down.
Okay, the next item is D. We had an incident here recently where one of the mowers shot a rock out and, uh, broke a window in a truck that was driving by. The gentleman is Mr. Tucker, and he is requesting reimbursement of three hundred dollar, three hundred eleven dollars and seventy-four cents. We did turn this into our insurance company, and our insurance company determined that we have no liability to do so. Now, we did not.
This is the second claim we've made of them and they've denied.
Well.
Because we had the one where the tree fell on the gentleman's car.
Yes.
And they denied it. Now they're denying this truck claim, I'm like, what are they, I mean, what are we paying them for? Exactly, that's what I'm certain, wondering, what are we paying them for?
It's nothing astronomical, it's, I mean, I've had, I've had to have a truck window repaired before, it ain't nothing crazy, but, I mean.
Well, Florida is a no-fault state too, so.
There's a, there's a windshield, which is probably why.
I know, it's on the tree.
They denied it.
But it was a.
But there's also a question about residency here, so, uh.
He does live in Florida.
Yeah, he does, no, he does. Yeah, he lives in Fort White.
Personally, no?
Yes, he, he actually, he's, believe it or not, he moved, he moved my grass in the house. I know the guy personally, yeah. But he called me immediately when it happened, "Your guy just busted out my windshield." I said, "Excuse me?"
Typically, because of the no-fault, windshield, insurance companies, municipal companies often deny these claims. I, I've never seen them approved.
This is a side window of this truck, not a.
Hey, there was a side window.
Was it a side?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Side, side window.
You sure it was the side or the back? I think he told me it was the back.
I looked at it, it was a side window because the car seat was sitting there, and he was all upset, and he'd had his kid, the glass all went in on, on his child.
Yeah.
Terms, the F one fifty-four, the three cab.
It said, I'm assuming that they put tent back on the window, that it was probably a side window. It said tent.
It says door gray.
Yeah, door gray, yeah, there you go, door gray, tent, privacy.
Why they got a Madison address?
That's, I saw that. Yeah, I don't know if that's where he took it too, but he's not.
He took it to the glass dock, he didn't want.
The job location is Madison.
Madison.
But the customer, David Tucker.
He lives here.
I understand they put the customer in there too, or the address there too, but.
He didn't want. He didn't want, he didn't want his address disclosed in public record. So that's why that says Sesame Street.
Well, and I see it's.
Well, tell me, we ain't gonna run to his house or something? I mean, the city booked the man one day. Can't sure the company ain't gonna pay for it.
Didn't nobody give him any lessons, had to aim that goal.
Yeah, well.
I see him going again, went to place in the road again.
I called, Ms. Connie, you're, you're Ms. King, I called dinner that day.
Yeah.
I did, I had a conversation with him about.
He tried right around, went right down that centerpiece. They even told you that, said, drive down South.
Yeah, he's, he's a, he's a hard worker, but he goes ninety miles an hour. Throwing stuff everywhere.
What y'all thinking?
What y'all thinking, guys?
I like the old pet.
They have.
All right, so.
I mean, I remember truly, they said that was active nature.
Regardless of where the man lives, if he was in our city.
He had control of this, and he does.
So we're good, Ms. Connie, good, yeah.
So you're making a motion to pay?
Yes.
You make, so let me make a motion.
Make a mo- make a motion to pay Mr. Tucker at three hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-four cents for repairs of this window.
King, second it, okay, any more discussion? All in favor of paying, request to pay Mr. Tucker three hundred and eleven seventy-four truck window? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Next on the list is an update on the Clay Electric Franchise Agreement negotiations. The gentleman that you had approved us to hire to handle that, his workload has increased, and he is not going to be able to represent us. So Attorney Coberline has contacted someone else and is working with that individual to hire, get a proposal from that individual as well.
Okay.
So I'll keep you posted on that. Next item is.
That was what I was talking about earlier. Anyway, I was getting those two confused. That's what I was talking about, that money.
Oh, the Clay Electric Franchise Agreements? The item number F is the second quarter financial statements. I do not have those tonight. We converted over to window, I mean, QuickBooks twenty twenty-one, and it had some glitches in it, and there are some wrong numbers in there that I'm working with our auditor office to fix. Courtney's gonna come by here and take a look at it. It's, it's got the payroll all messed up.
Right, okay, wow.
As soon as I get it fixed and proper numbers in place, then we'll go ahead.
Is everybody, is, is it, is this something that QuickBooks said they're having problems with or something? Or is it just?
I don't know what the problem was, but when it converted our data over from nineteen, we were using two thousand nineteen. When it converted it over to two thousand twenty-one, there was a glitch in there somehow. So we're working with QuickBooks as well as with Mr. Powell's office. The next item is the second quarter work history report. Y'all have that in front of you. As you will see, on the individual performances by the number of hours worked, you can see that Vern spends a great deal of time at the water plant. And also, he, for this quarter, there was five hundred and twenty possible work hours, and he was out a lot with his health issues, so he was at two hundred and thirty-three hours. If you look at Buster, Buster's, majority of his is spent litter pickup, and I think you'll see the mowing pick up a lot now that we're heading into the summer months, so you'll see that increase, I'm sure, as well. The last one, Jeremiah, he worked four hundred and twenty-four hours out of a possible five twenty. So he had taken a couple of days off. He has children that have disabilities, and they were having some issues. So you can see the different items that we are tracking.
This is how we got bad litter problems.
That's, that's three weeks.
We do.
He spent three weeks picking up trash.
Yeah, you can see that.
Hundred twenty-eight hours is three weeks. It's crazy, man, how much trash.
No sooner do they get it picked up, and it's, it's.
He spends three weeks picking it up and turns around, and it's just right back the way it was. I mean.
Could you imagine what it'd look like if we didn't pick it up?
Oh, I know, just right, yeah.
Sheriff's, make sure, probably help us out with that, maybe. Somebody needs to help some on this.
That's ridiculous.
That is ridiculous.
Last item is.
Ms. Connie, before we move on to that, is there any update on the stimulus money? I was talking to Buster the other day, and he was letting me have it by the back of his.
Yeah, but that is, we've had to spend more money on getting it repaired since the last time.
So I was just wondering about an update on that.
No, when I got the notification that we were going to receive stimulus money, it said we would receive it within sixty days. But I have not seen anything yet.
I was just wondering, so.
I haven't seen anything yet.
That way I can tell them something that they asked me.
Just for informative news, I sent off a grant request this past week to Representative Neil Dunn's office, our Congressman Neil Dunn's office, for a three-point-seven million dollar grant to take care of all the issues with our water system. The new well, new tanks, new meters, replacing the generator, pipe, everything that was in that sustainability and asset management report, would have applied for that grant to be able to do that. So, and we're gonna make some phone calls. Mr. Williams and I are gonna make some phone calls to their office and make sure that they take a good look at it for us. The last item is that we wanted to have a discussion about mobile homes within the city limits of Fort White. As all of you know, and we've dealt with this before, that in two thousand thirteen, the Land Development Code was amended, and it did not allow for mobile homes to be within, in the city limits of Fort White. The mobile homes that are here are grandfathered in, and they can be replaced with new or different mobile homes if the mobile home is not vacant off the property more than six months. In the meantime, we've had several people inquire about putting mobile homes on certain pieces of property here within the town, and you do not have a residential mobile home zoning category. I've discussed this with our consultant, Mr. Williams, and what he recommends is that we create a residential mobile home category, zoning category, and not pick any particular place. Normally, lots of times, they'll pick a certain section of the property, of the town property, and say, mobile homes are allowed here, and rezone it to RSFMH. Normally, that's done in agricultural zoning districts. What Mr. Williams is recommending is that we just have a mobile home zoning category, and then look at each application on, on a case-by-case basis.
As far as location?
As far as location, and where you want, if you want to allow them at all, where they want to go, that kind of thing.
And I think most of the people that I've talked to about this is very understanding that there are subdivisions with deep restrictions, and they're not trying to go into those places. These are just honest, hard-working people that have bought a piece of land that want to put a mobile home on it. And I, I don't see how we can tell anyone that, basically, we only tell the people, you can, you can put a modular and a site built in Fort White right now.
Correct. Within the town limits.
Within the town limits, right, exactly. So, so the town limits right now, if you got a vacant piece of property that you want to let one of your children buy from you or whatever, you, they cannot put a mobile home on it unless it has one sitting there now.
I know Mr. Schneider came about the same thing. I got a phone call from Mr. Gene Martin. I don't know who he is, if he spoke to any of y'all, but I got a phone call from.
Sounds like he spoke to all of us.
Here's, here's the situation.
Well, here's what I'm trying.
Back in two thousand six, he and Mr. Ford paid to have.
Right.
Section of property rezoned.
Right.
Into RSFMH.
Right.
Well, when the Land Development Code was amended in two thousand thirteen, that did not get addressed in the code, therefore it became null and void.
So does anybody know why they, does, I guess, I was hoping Mr. Cook would have been here tonight, because I know he's been on the board for a while, to answer that question. Why did they do that in two thousand?
I don't even know that anybody would have ever paid any attention. The way it's worded, single-family dwelling.
Single-family dwelling, though, per the definition.
Yes, fam, I did my homework, single-family dwelling is modular recital room.
Right.
Right.
I lived in, think everyone had fallen out. Everyone in mine was respectful. And if I'm not appropriate, I don't think. And if I wanted to put my daughter in here, she couldn't afford to go out. So definitely, and did you look at?
I think we need, I think we need to really look at this and try to figure out a way that we can allow certain areas to, to, to have. I don't know, like I said, I, I wish somebody could give me the reasoning why it ever changed.
It changed because the Land Development Code got amended, and whoever did the amendment did not include the MH zoning, which was in place before.
Yes, and it's not there anywhere. I, she, she, God, I had the Land Development Code at the house from sitting on PMZ board, so I was able to just flip through, and, and she was right. It does not exclude mobile homes anywhere, but it never gives you permission to put a mobile home. So you don't have to exclude.
You have to have that classification of zoning and.
Right, and, and you don't have.
And we do not have.
So it just don't have, it don't have the classification, MH.
Right.
So I guess our next thing would be ask Mr. Coberline how we would go about addressing.
Well, that would be a planning issue. That we would work with old Garrett to fix.
That's right, absolutely.
So we need to work, start working on that and figure out what we need to do to address that, so. Are y'all, and y'all agree with that?
Yes, and that's why those babies are back there also. Because they have property.
Right. I was discussing that. I'm like, our timing on this a bunch.
I don't, I don't see why we can't.
We gotta work on something.
Yeah.
I'll go and ask Mr. Garrett what he would recommend, and I'll explain to him what our consultant has recommended.
Well, I like what Mr. Williams said. I don't like secluded to one area.
I was fixing to say, because when you start saying excluded to a certain area, then that, that's gonna bring the red flag for other folks also.
Exactly, exactly.
People coming up there.
Yeah.
If you, you know, you go to one area, you already got subdivision with deep restrictions. That's all, hey, damn it, that's all highway.
Well, and you don't want them put into your commercial areas, your downtown district, et cetera. You've got to watch where you allow them to be.
Right. Yeah, and I agree with that, so, yes, I do agree with that, but then, then all the other areas, so I think it should be pretty much.
There's a lot of green on that map right there.
Right, there is.
A lot of green on that map.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, most definitely.
And that's all agriculture.
That's right.
All right, so let's, let's, yeah, talk with, talk with Garrett.
I'll get a couple of different proposals together from Mr. Garrett, and we'll discuss them, and then I'll bring them to the next meeting.
Because I know Mr. Martin's gonna call me in the morning.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. We got, is that the last topic?
Yes, that's the last item.
All right, I need a motion to adjourn, guys.
I'll motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All in favor of adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Good. Love y'all, guys, thank you.
Yes, sir.